Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Wakefield School Committee of August 23rd, 2016. I hereby call this meeting to order. I will read the mission statement of the Wakefield Public Schools. The mission of the Wakefield Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students to be lifelong learners who are meaningful contributors to society and meet their academic, social, civic, and physical potential. We have a public comment period. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on items on the agenda or other items of concern? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the August 9th, 2016 meeting as presented.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, edits on the minutes? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
Move that the school committee accept the minutes of the August 8th, 2016 School Committee Policy Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments or edits on the policy Subcommittee meeting? A minute. Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, okay, thanks everyone. So, under my comments, I just wanted to let everybody know that Dr. Smith and I met with Dorothy Presser from the MASC, the School Committee Consortium. Late last week, we had a really good conversation about shaping our agenda for the September 17th School Committee Retreat. I wanted to mention it tonight because I'd love to get some additional feedback from you between now and then on how to, you know, refine the agenda. But generally, we're going to take some time to look at School Committee norms and procedures to revisit some of our basic sort of housekeeping items that are all, if anyone is interested or wants to revisit some of those, they're in the 200 section of our policy book. So, 200 to 300 essentially are all about School Committee. I went and revisited them just as part of that conversation. It's worth revisiting every now and then, just to look at some of our norms and procedures and see what's working, see what's not. To spend some time around the next phase of the superintendent's evaluation and have a good conversation with Dr. Smith. And then, looking at broad goal-setting for both the School Committee and the District, both around the instructional strategy that frames our work. And then, probably spend some time thinking about some of the big things in the agenda in the coming year, including Wakefield High School. So, given that, did I cover everything?
You covered the book.
Yeah. Oh, right, right. So, yeah, so I want to be sure everyone has this. I thought this was really useful for me when I started, the Essential School Board Book. So, get extra copies for those members who don't have it. I think RJ and Rob probably don't, but the others who may have had it or may need a new copy will order one for you. But Dorothy's great, I think she'll be really, she'll be a great facilitator for the retreat. So, I just wanted to make sure I knew that. But in the meantime, if you have ideas, things, specific things you want to tackle during the day, it'll be 9:00 to 2:00, I think we talked about 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're still looking for a venue. We've explored a couple of venues. I'd like to do something that gets us a little bit outside of our usual places of business. But if you have ideas or specific things you want to tackle during the day, please let me know between now and the 17th. We've got plenty of time. And I guess that's it. From me.
Okay. So, first on the agenda is I have Assistant Superintendent Deadlines here to talk about the Professional Development Plan for 2016-2017.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. I appreciate it. See if I can queue up my slideshow here.
Some technical assistance?
It's not you, hold on a second.
I was going to say, I think it's on me, yep. So, I can go to something else if we think it's going to take more than a minute or two. Just a matter of finding the right source button. Here we go.
Here we go.
There we go.
Here we go.
Great. So, we have a very brief slideshow this evening. This aligns with the Professional Development brochure that is in your packet, okay? So, the mission statement for the Wakefield Public Schools Professional Development Plan is we believe in providing professional development that is responsive to the needs of all students, faculty, and staff. In order to promote a professional learning community, professional development will include clear goals, outcomes, measures, and opportunities for reflection, provide communication between faculty, staff, and administration, address legal mandates, district, school, and individual goals. It will use differentiation to promote professional growth and enhance current practices, and it will satisfy ongoing cohesive sustainable objectives. So, this mission and the Professional Development Plan that I'm going to talk about this evening is very consistent with the Wakefield Public Schools instructional strategy, which is what we use for a guide for our professional learning throughout the year. So, the goals for 2016-2017, these goals were created, these three bullets, were created through the leadership and feedback from faculty and teachers throughout the Professional Development Series that we did last year. So, one of the things that the Professional Development Task Force very thoughtfully advocated for, as well as the feedback from teachers, they asked if they could have more opportunities to teach and learn from one another. They asked if they could have opportunities to learn in smaller settings, the way we're offering professional development in the five-part series, or sometimes in larger groups. They asked if they could learn in smaller groups, preferably with their colleagues from their school. And they also asked if they could please have more choices within the professional development that was taking place during the course of the year. So, those, that information and that feedback that we got throughout the year last year is what set the stage for this plan and the goals moving forward. So, this year, we have 10 early release days. Five of them will be for professional development for our five-part series. And this year, there are five choices within the five-part series. And so, that's important to note because you'll note from one of our, one of the goals is that teachers really ask for choice. So, in the special education strand, there are two choices. Teachers can participate in five mini workshops that will, that will have smaller groups, and they'll be grouped by level, grades five, five through 12, and pre-K through four. Or, this year, different than last, we're going to ask teachers if they would like to participate in an action research pilot where a cohort of between six and 10 teachers will get together and do research in the topic of special education, or ESL, ELL, to further the instructional strategy in which we're working. So, those are two choices in the five-part series. For our ESL, ELL strand, there will be three potential choices. And in this area, this is where we've had some significant growth as well as choice. So, a third choice will be teachers can participate in, again, five mini workshops or lessons in sheltered English immersion strategies, or they can do an action research project that's, is specific to English as a second language or English language learners. And a third choice will be a coaching opportunity for teachers that currently have an English language learner in their class, if they have completed the sheltered English immersion course that they're required to take through the Department of Education. So, if they've taken the retail class and they have an ELL, they can get individual coaching to put what they've learned into practice. So, those are the five choices within the five-part series, which we're really pleased to offer. Another thing that we're going to be offering this year as part of in-district professional development, that will not be part of the five-part series, but I think it's important to note here, we will be offering our own sheltered English immersion course in district, which up until now has only been offered through the Department of Education. So, this is a Department of Education sanctioned course, and teachers who take this course will be able to receive their SEI endorsement, which means that they can teach ELL students in their classes, and they can also, will meet the regulatory framework to renew their license, okay? So, in terms of instructional technology and open space, again, this year, we're going to host the showcase for grade five through 12 staff, where they will share instructional practices with one another, as we did last year, which was very successful. Additionally, this year, our professional day on March 17th, teachers not just from five through 12, but pre-K through 12 will have an opportunity to share practices in an open space model. And so, in regard to school-based professional development, school-based professional development happens on Mondays, happens during conference days. So, what principals and teachers be working on in those areas, be working on supervision evaluation, special education training, will be working on inclusionary practices, as well as school improvement plans, instructional support, and PD sessions to support curriculum and the curriculum review cycle. The asterisks on the slides, just like in your brochure, these are aligned to the Massachusetts Standards for High Quality Professional Development that are denoted by the special, excuse me, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, in terms of job-embedded PD, our literacy coaches will continue to support teachers, as well as our math coach, our curriculum coordinator. We welcome a new science curriculum coordinator this year, Dr. Jennifer Thomas, who has been doing a lot of work this summer. We're just speaking to Dr. Smith this morning about how much work she's doing to prepare for our curriculum review cycle in science. So, we're really fortunate to have her onboard. So, we're also going to continue with curriculum leadership teams. Our library media specialists will work with teams of teachers, as well as classroom teachers, to go in to support student learning and technology, as well as literacy and connecting students to library sources. Our professional learning communities will be a place where teachers, again, can teach and learn with one another. And we'll be continuing with our learning labs this year to kind of de-privatize practice and allow teachers greater opportunity to collaborate with one another. Additional partnerships and the coaching of the coaches, I call it. And so, Leslie University will be a partner, again, this year with us. We're also going to have a consultant work with the literacy coaches and the curriculum coordinators, and he will kind of run their professional learning group to really work with them on coaching cycles and making sure that not only are we aligning our curriculum, but also that we're kind of making sure we're supporting the teachers the best we can. So, that is a very quick overview of our professional development cycle for 16-17. I hope to come back and kind of give you an update later in the fall, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you may have them.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. Let's start over here with Chris.
Are these starting like September 1st, those few days before school opens? Is that when you're opening these?
So, our first two professional days, so the professional learning will start in the first two days. So, yes, but they were not, those two days were not noted in the slideshow.
Are they part of 10 or an addition?
So, they're in addition to the 10. So, there are 10 half-days and they're professional days. One of which I noted on there was March 17, but the first two will be used to start the school year.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, thank you. Did you have questions?
No, thank you. Doug, and certainly to Dr. Smith as well, congratulations, I think, for you guys, the Professional Development Task Force as well as the administration. However brief, but thorough, this continues to show the collaboration, obviously, between the administration and the teachers.
Yeah.
And the success of this as a planning model, that just a short handful of years ago, we weren't nowhere, nowhere close to where we needed to be with professional development, professional learning. So, really, kudos to the entire team for what you've evolved as a really good calendar. It seems to me that the committee task force is really well-focused on its planning. It seems responsive, thoughtful, and useful, at least the topics that you've rattled off. You've responded to some inputs. I share some of this offline as well, from, you know, feedback that we've received during the bargaining process, not telling stories at the school, but this is obviously a topic of some conversations, some very positive conversations. So, it's really good to see that the feedback has been responded to in a positive way. One of the things that I'm pleased to see, and there's a continuation of the learning labs, I know we talked about that at your last presentation, that shows again faith, you know, good faith and trust in the process. It's not a gotcha moment, it's a learning moment. So, it's really good stuff in here. I just wanted to offer back the two cents to the administration. It's really, really good. It's good progress.
Wouldn't mind just making a comment about the PD task force, and, you know, Doug's work over the past year with the PD task force has been excellent. And another piece, you know, in terms of feedback, in addition to meeting with the PD task force each month, after every piece of five-part series or every professional development offering, Doug would send out a survey to teachers to get feedback from teachers all over the district, how did it go, how can we improve? And then, that was, you know, he synthesized that data and then reported back to them, this is what I heard you say. And then, the PD task force would look at it at the next meeting. So, I think, just that really engaging the teachers and the feedback process, to both of your points, has been a really important part of continuing to improve and really raising the level, the quality and the level of satisfaction, I think, in the district.
Thank you. Thanks, Tony.
So, thank you. Thank you for the kind words. I think, one thing that I would like to do moving forward is, you know, I'd like to have other staff, maybe teachers, come back as well to weigh in, to kind of share with you. There's one thing to hear my perspective, it's my job to do this, but, you know, for teachers that are participating in the professional learning, to actually be able to come back and share, this is the benefit that we're getting in terms of job-embedded professional development. And I think the way that Wakefield is doing this, and is doing this, was doing this when I arrived, so let me be, you know, I don't want to overstate my work certainly, but the structures that exist here, and, for example, the Professional Development Task Force, having a teacher team who is, you know, a built-in feedback loop, that is very able and willing to give you feedback, not only in terms of what needs to improve, but also, they're also very willing to kind of roll up their sleeves and tell you how we think it can improve. So, maybe members of that group could come back and share more with you as we're moving into the fall. I think that would be helpful and kind of hearing from them.
Great, yeah, I agree. Thanks. Yeah.
I'm good, thanks, thank you.
On this side? No? Okay. So, I had a couple. Oh, wait, just a couple. So, just thinking, Doug, about, you know, looking ahead at our budget planning for next year, and this may be for you or for Dr. Smith, or even Mike, do we have a sense for the growth of, the relative growth of resources that we're putting into professional development with our current budget and what the needs are for the coming years? Is this something we should begin to think about now as we look at what you're doing?
Well, for this year, we had a professional development budget, and we were able to, it wasn't overly large by any stretch, so, but we were able to make some decisions and prioritize and align what we were doing in terms of the curriculum cycle and the instructional strategy, and I think you'll hear more about that. But I do think we will need to start to plan for our professional development budget probably as early as October, before the following year, to start to think about, you know, where we want to be.
All right. That's something for the budget Subcommittee to start thinking about later this fall. Okay, thank you. And then, my other question was, I was thinking about this tonight because we, in our reports from Mike, we'll be looking at the new staff that's coming on. And do we have a professional development strategy specifically geared toward new hires? And as part of that strategy, mentorship from experienced teachers?
We do. Mentoring was listed in the job-embedded professional development. We have a formal mentor program, and there's a coordinator that's assigned to that program. All mentors are selected, kind of hand-selected and matched by the school administrators. Our new administrators even have mentors as well. So, all new staff, as well as people moving internally in district, will also be assigned mentors if they're moving into a new position. So, yes, there is a formal program, and that's something we think is critical.
It is, it's so important, yeah.
As people transition from wherever they were to where they are now.
Right, thank you. Thank you. And just one other note, I think Dr. Smith and I, in looking ahead at future agenda items, we thought, you had mentioned, Doug, the partnership with Leslie. We thought perhaps at some point during the fall, we can have Leslie back to look at that partnership and be able to ask some questions about how that's going, so.
So, we're meeting with Leslie tomorrow at 12:30 or 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So, we'll be able to report back on how that, our partnership with Leslie is evolving.
All right, great, thanks. Thanks again, Doug.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
I think I'll bump up the agenda item that has my other guest speaker, Brendan Kent, so give him a chance to come on up.
Back by popular demand.
There he is again. But the good news is, he's always back because our programs just keep growing under his leadership. And so, he's here to talk about potentially adding a boys' university golf team.
Yes, actually, it would be unisex, so either boys or girls.
Back to Title IX conversation.
So, thank you very much for, everybody, for having me again. I feel like I'm here a lot now, but as Dr. Smith mentioned, I am looking to start up a JV golf team at Wakefield High School, which we've never had a JV golf team before. And really, the need is just creating opportunities for our kids where there's interest. And so, regardless of what sport that is, if our kids are interested in a particular activity, I just want to create opportunities for them. And talking with our golf coach, who just recently retired, Dennis Biso, last year, after the season, I became aware that there is an interest in Wakefield for a potential JV golf team. I had talked to Coach Biso, and we only kept 10 players, which I'll, I'll get into the rationale behind that in a minute, but Coach Biso had mentioned that we actually had 25 that signed up to try out. And so, if you do the math, we're actually cutting more kids than we're keeping. And that, that just didn't sit well with me. I always want to give kids opportunities to participate in whatever it is they want to do. So, I brought this to Dr. Smith's attention back in the wintertime. It was kind of on my mind throughout the winter. Obviously, a JV team would allow more opportunities for kids, it would also help our program, help, you know, develop younger players. And also, this year in particular, we're returning majority of those 10 players. So, if a kid didn't make the team last year, they're still going to have a lot of competition to make the team again this year. So, I would hate to see a kid get cut, you know, one, two, or three years in a row. So, really want to give just kids opportunity to get out there and play. So, why only 10 players? So, this is customary throughout the league. So, how it's, how the middle-six league has meets is eight players score. So, you're allowed to have eight players out there, and then two more alternates after that, so 10 players in total. And part of the rationale behind that is the courses don't want, you know, 70 kids going out, otherwise their members aren't going to be too happy. So, five foursomes is really enough for them. If you were to carry over 10, if you were to have a meet, you know, where would you put those other players? You can't send them off, even if we had another course, you couldn't just send them off on their own, who would be supervising them, who would be coaching them? So, there's really some kind of logistical issues there, and the majority of the teams around the league carry it right around 10 as well. So, Coach Biso, you know, had a great point of why, why he only carried 10. Barry's has thought up a program, for Wakefield in particular, would be course time. So, this past spring, in summer, it was really tough for me because Coach Biso took care of our course time. He was a member at Thompson Country Club, which helped us get in there. That's where our team's been playing recently, the past few years. Our returning players expressed great interest in playing there again. I reached out to them. It was kind of in question for a little bit. I wasn't sure if we were going to get in there again. We're extremely grateful that Thompson is letting our varsity team play there once again. We did, used to have time at Bear Hill. Unfortunately, Stonem moved out of Unicorn, and Stonem being the hometown team, Bear Hill took them on. So, we do get a little bit of time here and there at Bear Hill, but mostly at Thompson. Difficulty for having a JV programs, you would need two courses, because if you had a meet at Thompson, you would need somewhere else for these kids to practice or play. As far as courses around here, there really weren't many options. The private clubs tend to cater to their members, their members are first. A lot of the public clubs, they'll cater to their hometown school. So, for example, you know, Mount Hood is owned by the city of Melrose, you know, they're going to take care of Melrose High School first. And then, after that, they also have their men's leagues and women's leagues. So, finding course times is very difficult. Funding, even when you do a course time, you still have to pay unless you have your own hometown team, which there is no publicly-owned golf course in Wakefield. Schedule, who would you play? There's not a lot of schools that have JV. Again, we don't have a course. And then, also, some head coaches just, you know, really aren't keen on adding added responsibilities to themselves. So, as far as getting a JV program off the ground and running, we did have some hurdles to jump over. Very fortunate for us, though, this past summer, I was looking around, knocking on doors and calling every course I could, and it just so happens that the old Colonial Course, which is right on the border of Linfield and Wakefield, just reopened. It's under the name King Rail now. So, I called them up. I asked if they had any schools in there yet. They did not. They were receptive of us playing there. I met with them, and we came up with a plan to allow us to play there if we are to have a JV team. So, as of right now, we do have two courses where we would be able to play. We have Thompson for our, would be if we had varsity, and King Rail for our JV, or practice for both. Funding, King Rail originally, they wanted to charge us money per player. Again, we really just didn't have it in our budget. The course manager was excellent. I said, can we come up with some kind of creative ideas to help us pay for this? I said, can we come up with some kind of creative ideas to help us pay for this? And being a course that just reopened, they're looking to draw attention, bring people into their course, so they are right now selling online, you know, Groupons and different discounts to play there, trying to get people to come to their course. So, we had an agreement, if we were to have a JV team, if we were to help them sell some of those by promoting those and selling them as, you know, fundraisers, that would pay for our tee times there. So, it wouldn't cost our kids or our school any additional money. Scheduling, very lucky, our new coach was a JV coach before this, so he has a ton of contacts for different JV teams. So, we do have a number of teams lined up. If we were to have a JV team, we have schools to play. JV coach, we just hired a new coach over the summer. We had a lot of very qualified candidates, so we do have people that are interested that, you know, we asked if, you know, you didn't get the varsity position, but would you be interested in possibly coaching JV if it was a reality? And some people expressed interest in that, so. Really, all the logistics are planned out. I was just talking to Dr. Smith before this, unfortunately, though. Trial's through this Saturday, and as of right now, we only have 15 players, 15 students registered to try out. Kind of the magic number we were looking at was 18. The reason being is, if we were to have varsity and JV meet at the same day, we could have the 10 varsity players play in the varsity meet, and then eight JV players play in the JV meet. And then, if we were to practice all together, really, we wouldn't want more than 18 on the course. The course probably wouldn't, you know, look too kindly upon that, so. We're hoping that a few more kids sign up. I have reached out to some of those kids that signed up in the springtime that have not registered yet. Some of them changed their mind, they're going up cross-country of football, and then some of them just have not responded yet, so. We'll see, but we're hoping to get to that 18 number. If we were to get there, we would like to field a JV team, so.
Thank you Brendan. So, before we open up for questions, I'll ask Rob to read the motion, and given the numbers, Brendan and Dr. Smith had asked for amended motion, so Rob's amended language.
Move that the school committee approve the junior varsity golf team subject to sufficient student enrollment.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Questions? Tom?
I think that this is a terrific idea, that first of all, how you opened is the stuff that I love to hear, you know? We want to be able to provide more opportunities for kids that want to play. So, I'm certainly in favor of the original motion, never mind the amended motion. Let me just ask, I guess the administration's intent with the number, the magic number is 18, what if it's 17? I mean, how close to, I mean, is 18 the number, that bad, or what are you thinking on that?
So, our coach is willing to work around that number. The kind of the challenge, if we were to get 18, we would look to add a second coach. The new varsity coach has already told me, if we weren't to reach that number, he would be willing to try to make something work with those kids just as one group, you know, instead of varsity JV, just one group, and maybe rotating those, that ninth and 10th spot, you know, into that varsity mix, so it's not always the same nine and 10. Obviously, golf's pretty cut and dry as far as who the top eight is, the top eight scorers are the varsity players. But, he's willing to work, try to work some magic around that if we don't get to that 18 number.
Because that is a, that is a big number for one more, one person to take on, additional, additional 10-plus kids, yeah.
Golf is labor-intensive as a coach, too.
Yes.
Chris?
Will you finish? I'm sorry.
No, I am, thank you.
Have you, is there a budget implication on this, or user fees going to carry this?
So, user fees, we've discussed, we buy the kids their uniform, we buy them balls, we provide bags for them, so that's really where most of their user fees are going. Also, we pay for our Thompson time. We do pay Thompson a fee, flat fee for the year. They provide us tee times for our tryouts, and then some, most of our home meets, not all of our home meets. We didn't have enough money to pay for both Thompson and a second course, so we were very lucky to work this out.
How do you cover transportation? Do you use the white bus?
Yes, so we use a white bus. As far as, as far as the location of King Rail, I believe it's so close that we may be able to get away with parents transporting their kids, because it's less than five minutes away, so.
I know transportation to most teams is the biggest.
Yes, oh, yes, absolutely. And we're allowed, the white bus saves us so much money for golf. And we're trying to work it out where if the varsity's home, the JV's away, so that we're not, we wouldn't have to purchase, pay for a bus. We could always just consistently use the white bus, which would save our program a ton of money, so.
Okay, it was, now, is that, is that the same vehicle that the Post Academy was also depending on, though?
Yes, so we ran into some issues last year, last fall, and then throughout the winter and spring, we were able to work out a schedule system where we were able to use it for athletics.
Without disrupting their programming?
Yes.
We've purchased, we've leased a second van, it was in the budget to share for Post Academy, so they now have two Toyota Sienna eight-passenger vans, which covers the majority of their needs. The only time they'll need to use the white bus now is when they have a group outing, where they want all the students and all the faculty from the Post Academy to go at one time. So, that's, we've, we think we've eliminated the backlog of white bus need throughout the district, so, yeah.
Good, that's.
And that was an important thing, because it was definitely a backlog last year, yeah.
Thank you.
Anne?
So, I just have a couple, I think it's a great idea, because I like giving kids more opportunities, and I think athletics is a really important avenue for students, but it, just in terms of the timing, is that it is going to have a budget impact, as you noted, that we'll have to hire a coach that was not part of, again, it's another surprise item that's not part of our budget. So, I'm just concerned that, you know, this probably should have been part of the budget process, so that it, we could have seen it collectively, so that's my concern.
So, I already, I think I've reached out to Dr. Smith and Mike about that, because right now, we have budgeted in, for one of, unfortunately, for one of our sports, it looks like we're not going to have a freshman level for field hockey.
Oh.
Unfortunately, the numbers just don't look like we're going to have enough to fill a freshman field hockey team.
Okay.
And we already have that salary built in to the budget.
Okay, so it would be a budget neutral.
Yes.
Okay.
So, it would be a budget-neutral move.
Okay.
And then, the other piece that I was thinking of in regards to helping the course sell those vouchers, if we reach, you know, a certain limit, could we potentially use some of that money as fundraising to potentially pay for an assistant coach? And they're open to helping us with that, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Roger?
Brendan, just a quick question. You said we get some free golf course time?
Yes.
With fundraisers and kind of promoting their golf course?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, I think I speak on behalf of the whole committee, very proud of our sports and our school sports system here, expanding, that's, that's, that's great. And also, thank you for being proactive and thinking of different avenues to save the town some money. I think I speak on behalf of all the taxpayers when we do that, so.
Absolutely, appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? No? A motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed and unanimous? Thank you. Thank you again Brendan. And keep, obviously keep us updated on the numbers.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm sure I'll find a reason to have you back soon.
Thanks, guys.
So, we really do appreciate also the extra miles, and extra length he's gone to to secure hockey rinks and golf courses and everything else.
Ropes courses.
Yeah. Okay, so now, I'll bump back to the community conversation for later start time. So, in your packet, I just included two pieces of information. So, just as a reminder, kind of the what, is that the superintendents in the Middlesex League had created a resolution to explore this issue of the possibility of later school start times with our communities, with the idea that we would come up with some, some kind of a, an agreement or an understanding or decision by the, for the 2017-18 school year. I think I told you, I entered as a new superintendent. This conversation had already been going on for a long time, and everybody was ready to sign when I was walking in the door. So, you know, my understanding is, it really is just an agreement to have the conversation. It's not an agreement that you're doing this, it's not an agreement that, you know, of any specifics, just that you will explore the issue with your community. So, that is the kind of the what. The why, at one point last school year, I shared an article, which you can refer to by the CDC, that talks about how early schools' start times are particularly difficult for adolescents and could potentially affect their academic performance and their health. So, that's kind of the why behind it. So, Mr. Leakos and I just kind of talked through, how might we just kind of create a timeline for approaching the conversation? You know, who are the people? When might we have the discussion, and how might that occur? And so, we just wanted to share these ideas with the committee for your feedback or input. Certainly, I want to speak to, you know, Mr. Mayo, and fill him in on the conversation, and I would think that would be something that I would want to do right off the bat. And then, in the month of September, perhaps I would sit with my district and school leaders to share the idea, get some feedback. How would this affect you? What are some of the road bumps you might, roadblocks or barriers that you might see? What are some of the, in addition to obstacles, what would be some of the positives? And have a discussion with school and district leaders. At that point, you know, we would probably want to turn to faculty and staff. I'd love to partner with members of the school committee for, you know, maybe from this point on in the process. Maybe have a forum that we invite faculty and staff to, to give us some feedback. Maybe produce an online survey that could be more utilized for more than one group of constituents. And then, I forgot to put the dates here, but for parents and maybe booster clubs, also maybe in that October, early November timeframe, also have a forum for parents and, and an online survey as well. And then, perhaps even consider sometime as we move a little bit later, maybe November to December, invite public, anyone in the community that would like to come here to a public hearing and talk to us live at a school committee meeting, and also have access to the online survey. Might be a way to get a lot of feedback from our community, what do they think about the idea, and to, and to have that conversation. We also talked a little bit about, some communities, I think, put together a website, or where people can look at research articles, or have an opportunity to weigh in with like an online conversation, or something like that. So, that's what we, just in our first conversation, wanted to put out there for you. And then, in the meantime, the second page of your packet was, I just recently received this email about a week ago. NESDEC is a superintendents group, actually that you've utilized before for superintendent searches and so forth. They do a lot of different projects to support school districts, but they, they are running a workshop on starting school later. And so, I noticed that there were two opportunities to go, and two representatives can attend. So, I emailed them back and said that I was interested in attending, and they provide you with, you know, so that you're not reinventing the wheel, if you were to approach this, what are, you know, they give you a lot of information about people who've done it, how they've done it. And they did, this woman emailed me back again and said, do you have any particular concerns, or things that you'd like us to address in mind? And I mentioned a few things. One is transportation. I said that in, you know, Wakefield, we count on a small fleet of buses to transport elementary, middle, and high school students, you know, and that, so it would really affect everyone and everyone's schedules. It's not something, I know Melrose recently added a later start time for high school students, but they don't have bus transportation, so it was as easy as just making the decision and doing it. It would affect us differently, since we have to worry about bus transportation. Talked about, from the standpoint of, you know, the collective bargaining process and working with our teachers' union, and what would be involved, I was just curious about that, any information that could give us some feedback on that. And then, the third question I had, just from being a high school administrator, you know, one concern I might have, and wondered if there's any data that talks about absenteeism, and if teenagers are in bed after parents, are still in bed after parents go to work, I just, I was wondering how that might affect kind of an opposite problem of who's getting that teenager to bed and pushing them out the door and getting them to school, you know, which is, which is a reality. So, that's one thing that I was just curious about. I am very much familiar with the research on sleepy teenagers, which I've definitely experienced that as well, but I just kind of wondered, did anybody have that kind of data? So, I just sent those three remarks back, and when they do this workshop, if those were questions that might be able to be answered. So, just looking for feedback, or your thoughts on how we might approach the community conversation for later school start time.
One thing I wanted to add, I can't remember if we touched on this when you and I spoke, but we wanted to make sure that this process didn't run into the high school process as well, right? We wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't having public forums and hearings at the same time, when we're also, you know, trying to get out there and solicit input into the high school process as well, which will be later, so.
Meaning the statement of interest.
Yeah, statement of interest, right, right. So, in other words, trying to get some of this out of the way before all that begins, essentially. So, I hope we, I hope that this outline does that, but we want to hear from all of you about ideas as well.
So, you can see, we just sort of looked at the first half of the year, with the idea to do it sooner rather than way too late.
Right. Anne, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I just think it's great to solicit community feedback and to think about all of the logistics involved with it, because I think that the research is pretty strong, that it does help students to have a later start time. I know that I teach at the university level, and I used to teach an eight o'clock class because it was convenient for me. I don't do that anymore, because they're so sleepy, that we don't get much done. So, I, my afternoon, I found out that my afternoon classes, they do much better. So, I think that there's definitely the evidence, but the logistics, I think, are really key in terms of the impact on families, on teachers, and, you know, if we change, even changing teachers' work schedule, I don't know, all of us, if all of a sudden we were told that we had to come in at a different start time than what we're used to, that might be, cause some issues, so. I think that's great, good approach.
Yeah, thanks. Tom?
I concur with everything that Mr. Dan, he just said. I have a mechanical question. One is, who would be the, I guess, the host or the sponsor of this? Is it the superintendent, is the committee, is it just, or is such a thing even necessary? What's the, what's the process by which we would, that would, that would run as a matter of mechanics?
So, I had that same question, and I would like for it to be both, the school committee and superintendent together, and an active conversation with our community, if that was possible.
It's fine, I'm asking, I don't have, I don't really have a preference. I was just asking the mechanics.
Yeah, it's a good question. Yeah, and I agree with Kim, I think it would be good if we are active partners in this conversation, because I think, I mean, I guess, I think coming out of, the outcome of this phase of the conversation would be sort of a summary, right, of facts. In other words, what this is, this is the research, this is what we heard, and this is what we know, and this is what it would, this at least, what we know about what it's going to take to make this happen, if we agree we want to do this. And then, we'd have to bring that back to this committee and say, okay, you know, and have a real full conversation about whether we think it's worth it. So, yeah, I think that's right.
So, just something to ponder, not to disagree with that point, but certainly, the mechanics around the open meeting law give much greater leeway to the superintendent running the process than by having.
I see what you mean, yeah, yeah.
We could be, we could attend, we could be active participants, and, but if it's a superintendent's directive.
Right.
Just, just, it doesn't mean we couldn't do it, it just means there's more, there's more square boxes around us running that process.
Yeah, it's a good point, yeah.
My second question, as a matter of mechanics, is are we, again, whoever we are, prepared to take a position? Are we advocating a side? So, we're going to, if it's a hearing, of sorts, usually have a hearing about a motion being, not maybe that mechanical, but is there, are we going to be a proponent for something? Are we just going to let?
So, I have a thought about that, because I, and maybe you can tell, I haven't made it my mind yet. I really, I think the research, like Anne said, is compelling, but I think the logistics and how it affects other people, and maybe some more data would be necessary for even me to make my own decision on what I think. So, my thought was that this first half of the year would be to hear all of that, to help inform our thoughts, and then, at that point, you know, perhaps we would, you know, think about what our, you know, stand or stance would be.
Yeah, I guess we could, yeah, one way to think about it was, it could be that after the fact-finding and the research, that then we ask Dr. Smith to make a recommendation to the school committee, and then we, and then, you know, we have that discussion and take a position. I would be totally comfortable. I would be totally comfortable with that. I think that would make a lot of sense. Go ahead, Tom.
So my only concern about that is that a natural first question by everyone is going to be, how does this work?
Right.
You know, there's only going to be so many people, no matter how much research we, no matter how many links we give them, they're going to read them or they're not. They're going to be concerned about the mechanics. How does this work? What time does my kid get picked up? What time does the school start? You know, you look at the district and school leaders, faculty and staff, teachers, everyone's going to ask that. So the fact finding is only going to, the research and the expectation of people to go read is only going to get us so far. I guess to be very practical about it.
Yeah, yeah.
So there is going to be an expectation, well, how does that work?
Yeah.
Now, maybe we can put out ideas without being a proponent for them.
Yeah. Well, I think one of.
We just have to, we just can't let people have at it.
Sure, sure. But I think one of the things we can prob, I hope we can do between now and the time when we, when we start this process is have a little bit of information about how other districts have done it. And I think even more recently, two or three, obviously Melrose is a different animal in some ways, but, but there was another, at least a couple of other fairly close by communities that have started this, and we can certainly learn from them as well.
Well, I'm sorry, my last, one of the things that came out of the MAS C, MAS S conference last fall was that the Newton Public Schools, and I think I mentioned this at a prior meeting when we talked about this, the Newton Public Schools is sort of rallying this topic for the Metro West series of communities.
Right.
So this conversation is occurring in other parts of the state as well, so it's obviously very timely. But I went to that session run by the Newton Committee, and they had representatives of a community that it did well in and a community that it did poorly in.
Okay, good.
Because there are, there are both sides of the aisle, if you will, on communities that have tried the earlier times and what may, so maybe getting, maybe asking for a guest speaker or against some of the community.
That would be great, yeah, yeah. If you could share, if you, do you still have a link to that? That would be great if we could see that. Chris, go ahead.
I think a big part of the conversation needs to be, you know, what other communities are also willing to do this because I don't think you can pull it off as a standalone. It would have too big an effect on all the extracurricular activities.
Right, it's a big consideration, yeah.
If the after-school activities are expected to start at 2:30 because everybody else got out at, you know, 2:00, then we go to 3:00, then we're out of sync with everybody. So, I mean, it can't happen on its own.
So I think that's why the Middlesex League Superintendents, you know, did the resolution together because it was also all of us agreeing that, you know, we'll work together based on the results of what each, all of the towns do. So.
So is it possible that if the majority of other Middlesex towns wanted to do it, then we would almost be forced to do it?
So not that, it's that if other communities in the Middlesex League decide to go with a later time, then everybody's clock will start later for after-school activities. So even if we decided not to do it, it would just mean that it would just be maybe 15 or 20 or 30 minutes later that activities would start. They wouldn't be starting earlier. They would only be starting later.
Right.
So that would be the impact on us, would be that.
Okay.
Anne?
Oh, sorry, Rob, go ahead.
Go ahead, Tom.
So I was just, I think probably all the questions around the table are a testament to what you said, Dr. Smith, about more data being needed about it. My initial thought was that it's important, I think, that a lot of the research and a lot of the thinking behind it is presented, as you had said, Mr. Markham, beforehand. So kind of before we jump into these conversations, whether, you know, manifest in like information sessions with the community about, you know, the research behind it, the pros and the cons, in a manner that's digestible. I think, you know, so as to come at, so as to come at the conversation, you know, on an even footing would probably benefit everybody more, you know, than just jumping directly into conversation. So I think that's a wise idea.
So I think based on hearing that and what you said also, Tom, would be, we may be jumping in a little early to, it may not be realistic to jump right in in September. It sounds like having some research ready ahead of time and maybe even some proposed schedules so people know what they're responding to. Because like you say, it's going to come down to, well, how many more minutes are you talking? People are going to want to see maybe, you know, it might look like this or it might look like that. Just so that they have, they can, so we may need to bump this back.
A little more concrete.
Yeah, and if we're going to get some representatives from other schools or do a little bit of that research, we may have to bump our timeline back a little bit to prepare better for these forums so people really, we're not just walking in blindly and having a conversation, I think is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Anne, go ahead, please.
I was just going to say that it's, whenever we like doing consumer engagement for research where we're trying to figure out what, how people are responding to an idea, the more concrete information that you can have, it's, you get more realistic views of how they're really feeling about it. So if you do have the transportation issue figured out, could it be done? This is how we would handle transportation? This is, would be the start time? The more concrete, then they have something to, right, they have something to respond to. And then you can ask them, you know, what are your concerns based on this? What would your concerns be?
I also received this email about the workshop after we had put our little timeline together, kind of hoping they will run the October 28th one because I have a feeling that maybe we will receive a number of models and a lot of really good, concrete, specific information that we could use in the conversation. So many of these things speak to having, to bumping our timeline back enough to be able to be well-prepared with that kind of information.
Could I, I just, Anne's expertise in this area reminds me that we should take advantage of it because I think, as opposed to research. No, really, I mean, it's, it is, it's, it's not easy to come by. So this kind of process requires a lot of expertise, and so if you could help, that would be tremendous, yeah.
Happy to.
All right, okay. Any thoughts on this side? Yeah, RJ, go ahead.
Is a lot of Middlesex thinking 8:30 because I think that's what I read maybe a few months back.
I think, you know, I can't remember off the top of my head what Melrose decided, but I don't think it was quite that late. I want to say it might have been 8:15. So I think it would be, so we start school at 7:30, high schoolers, which is early. So, you know, even 8:00 would be a pretty significant change. So I don't think it has to be as late as something like 8:30. I think it could be anywhere from 7:45 to 8:30, but somewhere probably in that window. And then the question is, what about middle school? I think we need to look at the research there, too. And then again, whatever we do will impact our elementary school students based on the bus situation, so.
I do agree with Mr. Calhanoglu about extracurriculars. I do remember as a student, obviously I would have loved another half hour, an hour, but kind of looking back, I think it really taught me some discipline to kind of wake up early, get the day rolling. Teen jobs and teen sports and teen extracurriculars all around, I think they could be affected. I don't know if I would have an after-school job if we pushed it back. So 7:45, 8:00, I think that's something I could support, but much later I think is pushing it.
Yeah, and that, so that's the kind of feedback we're going to want to get from people. You know, and I think that's to that point of what would be the window that you might support it and when do we start getting out of that window? And that might give us the best and most realistic feedback from our community, so.
All right, thanks. Thanks for the feedback.
That's great feedback, thank you. Okay, next on my agenda is just a school opening information and update. So we're really excited. Just this morning, the welcome back letter went out to faculty and staff. Tomorrow, the parents will receive their welcome back letter from me. And in each of those documents, we gave everybody just the basic information they need for school opening. So faculty and staff report on September 1st. We have a full day of opening activities and professional development. And then on Tuesday, September 6th, we have faculty and staff again for that full, a second full day of professional development and preparation for our students. And then our students join us on Wednesday, September 7th for a full day of school and the year is off and running. So we're very, very excited to have our students back. What I shared with you in the packet are just some, some of the things that have been going on in preparation. So last week, we had our district leadership retreat on August 16th and 17th. We spent two full six-hour days at the Northeast Consortium for Staff Development in Topsfield. It's a free location off campus where we could just work and concentrate together. So the district instructional leadership team was together for those two days. And I included in your packet our retreat objectives, all focused on teaching and learning, our strategy, the implementation of our strategy. We did what we call strategic mapping, which is how, it's one thing to have a strategy in print, it's another thing to actually implement it and to have it live in the actions and behaviors of people in your schools, from the administrative team to your school leadership teams, to your, you know, teachers in the classroom and the actions and behaviors of students. So it's really strategically mapping how we would enact each of the strategic action plans. We just talked about the development of a professional learning community model. Spent a lot of time about developing teacher leaders in the district, and I think that's something that I'm really excited and passionate about. And so that was a big topic of our conversation. We did some of our professional development planning with Doug Lyons. We talked about the implementation of standard five, which will be new for us this year. And then we just delved a little bit deeper into educator evaluation, our observation and feedback cycle. So I think we're well-prepared and ready to go. It was just a great two days with our leadership team. One thing I think that was just really exciting was that every principal in the district is coming back. We have no new principals and no new school leaders. Everybody, actually, on the leadership team is intact and that helps a lot, you know. So I think a lot of continuity moving into the new year. The day before to our retreat, I had a two-hour conference call with my executive team and principals to take care of all of the management and operations items that needed to be addressed so that we could focus on teaching and learning at our retreat. So I included just the agenda items there. We talked about management and operations around curriculum instruction, you know, putting in our, you know, are we ready to go with new curriculum? Are we ready to go with our SEI, you know, plan? Are we ready to go with our leadership teams, our learning walk calendars, all of that kind of thing? And then we talked at length about other management operation pieces like personnel and hiring, food services, transportation, Wakefield Academy, et cetera. And then we finished off our meeting talking about some of the basic school opening protocols, emergency protocols, data verification, new teacher orientation, and following up on our summer reading and math challenges. So that's really what we've been doing last week, and now everybody's kind of out at their school sites and really, you know, the last touches on getting ready for our students. One update I wanted to give you, last meeting I shared with you the transfer requests from the elementary students. So those are all complete now. They were all approved except for one, and the one that was not approved was a request to go from one elementary to another where the class size was too big. But the family was very understanding and, you know, it was a hope, but were satisfied with staying where they were. So that's the update on the transfer requests, which had not been completed at the last time I saw you. The next two pages in your packet are about the, an update on the technology projects across the district and update on facilities projects across the district. So in technology, we're really moving with our device sustainability plan. So we've, we're infusing new Chromebooks, new devices for students in grade five. So we have a whole new fleet coming into that grade. And then the Chromebooks that they replace, so we're basically taking the oldest or the least of the fleet out as the new devices come in. And those, though, they don't just go on a shelf. We use, we'll be using those devices to supplement our supply of loaner devices to support BYOD at the high school, to serve as extras at the Galvin when devices go out for repair, to make sure that education and teaching and learning at no time is interrupted. The student will always have a device even if it breaks, there's one ready to move in. And the ones that are in somewhat of district repair will really be in a place for spare parts so we can do some in-house repairs the best we can if they're not working up to par. Our elementary school teachers will receive new devices sometime this fall. And again, the devices they, that will go out of service will be, again, put to good use for the remainder of their usable life. They'll be assigned to paraprofessionals who might need them. Some of them may enter the loaner device supply as well and to continue to support our needs when a staff device goes out to repair. So that's where we are with that. The high school phones, we are working now on phasing in a new phone system. This will, the work will, has started in August, but will carry into the fall. But this was the, as you recall, from our capital planning and our technology planning, this is so that the high school teachers can call out, you know, 911 and can call out of the classroom on their phones. So that, that work is underway. Projectors, we, the installation of projectors is well underway. It's actually almost complete, it may even be complete by today. I think Jeff Weiner had told me that by today or tomorrow, they, 90% of them will be in. There's a few new adds that will go into the, to the school year. But, so projectors are mapped out around the district where we needed them. At the Doyle Early Childhood Center, we've selected TV screens instead of projectors based on the needs of the teachers and students there. So that's well underway. We were able to get the project at a strong savings. So because of that, we were able to add a few projectors that we weren't going to be able to afford at the beginning. And one of those is to put a projector in the Savings Bank Theater so that we'll be able to do presentations from the front of that space, which is, you know, finally, you had to, you couldn't really use a remote unless you were standing in the control booth. So that's, that'll be a nice add to that, to that room. We do a lot of presentations, both the school and the community do a lot of presentations in that room. And then the server upgrade, upgrade project is phasing in new hardware into the existing environment. Again, that'll, that work will go into the school year. Initially, they were going to set up a parallel installation, but they've worked out a more stable arrangement and that has both onsite and offsite backup. So that actually will end up being a financial savings on other services and future budget cycles, so that was good news. So that's the report from Technology and Jeff Weiner. Maria Sorrio provided me with a report on facilities. So there's been a lot of cleaning and maintenance efforts across the district and the delivery of some of the capital projects that were on the docket. I don't know if you noticed the exterior painting of the fieldhouse? Looks fantastic. That was very battered looking on three sides. There was one side that was painted beautifully and the other ones hadn't, had not been done. So that is finished, it looks really nice. There is a major interior ceiling replacement project going on at the high school. It looks so nice. It includes LED lighting upgrades. You'll really notice it in the front lobby of the school when you walk in. There's been some flooring replacements and 50 additional window replacements at the high school and the fire panel and public address systems, the upgrades have been completed. So that's the good news at the high school. Otherwise, across the district, we've done some interior painting, ceiling and flooring replacements at Woodville, Greenwood, Greenwood and Doyle. Doll Bears had some painting. We've repointed and completed concrete repairs at Greenwood, Walton and Doyle. And Doyle, some really important work in terms of security has taken place. They're getting a new card reader and their public address, address system will be completed. Post Academy, it now has, I think, is the air conditioning done, Michael?
Temporary, temporary solution.
Okay, they have a temporary solution on air conditioning and some new windows, some sound panels and a new card reader for security and some area rugs for sound. Galvin is brand new, so didn't really need much. But this summer, we had all of our summer programming at the Galvin. It went extremely well. Even those who were skeptical were very happy at the end of the summer, so that, that was great. And now that, we're in full force to unclean that building now and get it ready. That will be done in time. And then finally, the Walton Limited Scope Site Study has seen some progress with the RFP being released. And an informational meeting was held last week, at least according to Maria's notes that she would have attended. So everyone's working really hard to make sure the facilities are ready. So that's my update on getting ready for school opening.
Any questions from the committee? Chris?
I might be off on my memory here, but I recall at the Doll Bear, when they were upgrading the computer controls, they could only do so much because they ran out of money and they had to complete that project on a separate year. Is that all finished now?
You know, I don't, I'm not sure.
I think it went, they did a lot of the hardware upgrade, but there was a software upgrade that was needed also in one part of the building, the old part of the building was running on one software and the new part of the building was running on a different software. I don't believe that that has been. on a different software. I don't believe that that has been a hundred percent resolved yet. But it's, it is on Maria's radar. It's a, it's a constant reminder on Maria's radar. So.
I, I just knew it had been a problem and it was, and I don't remember the exact numbers. They don't really matter. But there was so much allotted in one year and they went through it all, but it wasn't enough to finish. So they had to come back and finish.
We can find that out. Michael, I can ask Maria about that.
Because I just knew it was just, it had been left in limbo.
When we get, when the town puts out the capital budget, they, they lump a lot of things together on heating and cooling and ventilation, HVAC upgrade. It's usually lumped into one bucket and not usually specific to one building unless it's a major project for one building. So they may put fifty or sixty thousand dollars into an HVAC capital improvement plan so they can maybe replace some chillers or some blowers or something. And more than likely, it's, it's in that bucket and probably something that will happen throughout the year if it's not already.
I would just like to see it.
I, I would love to see it. Trust, trust me. You walk into the cafeteria and it's like an icebox and you walk into another part of the building and it's not as well-conditioned. So.
Well, and all, not only that, but operationally, we're spending more money than we should because we're not getting the efficiencies out of the system. So.
I'll definitely ask Maria for an update on that.
Other questions? No? All right. Thank you.
Okay. And I have just one more last on my other. So just, you know, I, I sent you all an email, but I, it's, it's really worth highlighting the, the development of standard five as part of educator evaluation really has just caught on like wildfire. And, and so the last time I had talked to you, you know, I had gone to Washington DC and came back. But what happened since then was I received an email from Dr. Linda Darling-Hammond's office. She's at Stanford University in California. And she's one of the foremost educational, you know, education, research and literature experts and writers in the country. And so I gave you a link so you could just look up who she is. But in my doctoral program, we read a lot of work by Linda Darling-Hammond. But at any rate, a lead researcher from her office called and asked if they could interview me to talk about the work we're doing in educator evaluation. And I guess Dr. Darling-Hammond is writing a paper about innovative state and local teacher evaluation systems and practices to share with practitioners across the country. And she was interested in what we were doing. She had heard about it through the cross-state collaborative in Washington DC. So I ended up taking a forty-five minute interview. And it's just, it was so exciting to talk about the Wakefield Public Schools. And so I just, I wanted to share that great news with you. So the researcher promised me that if Wakefield shows up in the book, she'll give me a call and let me know. So. And but she did ask me to send her a lot of the documents, including our standard five. And, and I did do that. So that was very exciting. And then I had told you last time, and, and since then I have actually done it, I presented the development of, of the Wakefield Public Schools' core values and instructional strategy to thirty new superintendents in Massachusetts. The professional coaching team for their induction program had asked me to present Wakefield's work as a model for, for how to develop a really excellent instructional strategy. So, so that was, it was great. And just wanted to share both of those pieces of good news with you. So that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Ken. Okay. Now we go to budget items, business reports.
Thank you. And thank you for inviting me also tonight, along with Doug and Brendan.
You're always welcome.
I appreciate that. I'll always tee you up on that, too. Thank you. I, I did want to, I was asked to prepare some, some budget reports for the, for the committee. And historically, these come out after our close of month in August because we really aren't ramped up with much. But I was asked to put these together, so I did. And I'll, I'll make a few comments on them. There's not a whole lot to report. But under the salaries category, lines one through six, you can see that we've expended about three percent of our budget. That's truly about full-year employees as well as summer school employees, our clerical staff, our secretarial staff, clerical and custodial staff, I'm sorry, our administrative staff who's full year, as well as our summer school employees. We have not encumbered any salaries yet. And, you know, the, I guess the simple explanation for that is that we are still in negotiations with several units, several, a couple of units, I should say. And encumbering salaries is a, is a very time-consuming process and to have to do it twice, really to me, not knowing that I was going to have to be asked for business reports this week, didn't seem like it was the best use of my time with, with everything else that was on my plate. So that's why the encumbered salaries aren't showing up yet. But we do have a lot of money left in salaries. So that's, that's the good news. Under the contracted services, though, you'll, you'll notice that we have either expended or encumbered, albeit about twenty-three percent or seventy-seven percent of our, of our contracted services have been accounted for for the year. And certainly in materials and supplies, you can imagine that July one comes, or June fifteenth actually comes, and PO start coming in for next year for all the textbooks, all the supplies, copy paper, everything like that. And, you know, my staff has been doing a great job getting all the utilities encumbered. Special Education Department is taking great pride in making sure all of the tuitions are encumbered for the year, all of their contracted services, their home tutoring, their speech and language and OTPT and all their services that they require get encumbered. So that's where a lot of, the majority of the contracted services and supplies and materials are, is they're, they're encumbered for the year. Or, or WB Mason and Staples and School Specialty orders are, are coming in by the truckload. So schools are looking in really good shape from purchasing standpoint. The second page, any questions on the first page? The second page is by location. Not much to report there. You know, most of our location is spent in salaries. The majority is spent in salaries. So again, windows unencumbered. The third page is not anything substantial. On, on the fourth page, this is our grants. And we are aware that we have been notified of, four of the nine grants have an actual amount. And actually, the, the CPC grant, that, that's going to come at the same number we projected, one forty-seven, two hundred. So that's five out of the nine that we're aware of. I just got the information from Mrs. Goyette late, late this afternoon. So it missed a report. But we're still waiting on some grants. And that's not uncommon. Some of these grants don't get issued or, or get awarded until later in the year, especially the ones that don't come through DESI. Some of the early childhood grants come directly from the Department of Early Childhood and Care. So, you know, grants, there's nothing substantial here. It's nice to see that the two forty grants up about forty-seven thousand dollars, forty-six thousand dollars from what we got last year and projected for this year. Title one's down a little bit, I believe. Yeah, about eighty-five hundred dollars. So, so this, for the most part, most of the grants are up that have come in so far or, or level funded. So we're looking pretty good on grants, but again, not everything's there. On the revolving accounts, those are traditionally our athletics, our school lunch, our performing arts, things that happen during the school year. So I, the town really hasn't closed out the air force yet. So the balance forwards are my best, my best guess, through munis, not guess, but my best use of munis that I could depict of what I thought the starting balances were going to be. Those could change over the next month or two, just, just to give you a little heads up that if you see school lunch at seventy-six thousand, it could come in at a hundred and twenty. I think there's, there's a little discrepancy on that one. But all the other ones, I feel pretty confident on, or that I'm, I'm pretty close to with the starting balances on those. The balance on this, though, it does show that our revolving accounts are at a negative three hundred and fifty-four thousand. Certainly, that's all because of the circuit breaker. And we've encumbered all those tuitions already for the year. And we won't start receiving those payments. And I actually haven't been notified as of yet what our circuit breaker reimbursement number is for this year. But confident that we're going to come in at least at budget, if not exceed budget. Any questions on those?
Any other questions from the committee? Tom?
Thank you. I guess an observation on the grants, which is probably good news for all of us. And I see it later, agenda item when the legislators are coming, that we got an increase in the Metco grant.
Yes.
That's certainly something I know that we advocated for. And we spoke to even the parents, we had our Boston meeting about, about that. So that's certainly, that's certainly good to see come to be. Mike, on the revolving funds, it, really good news, even if, even if this is, you know, unaudited, if you will, this isn't, this is your work, not Kevin Gill's. But nonetheless, the fact that none of these balance forwards, none of these June thirty numbers are, have any parentheses anywhere near them is a really good thing.
Yeah. And usually those, usually those ones that we have to bail out through school committee funds will have a zero balance starting. And athletics has been one that has been either close or at zero a couple of years. Everything is far above zero. I mean, I think we're, you know, I have to say, got an email earlier from Ms. Lynn Scott earlier in, late in July, maybe early August, that the preliminary numbers were really good and that, you know, this was a, a good, a good thing to see from the school department, that all of our revolving accounts were, were above board without any transfers or anything. So, you know, I, I, certainly I'm not taking the credit. I think Brendan's done an exceptional job with the athletic group. Jeff Boyd with the, with the academy. You know, certainly Tom Banker with the performing arts is always above board. But, you know, and Kristen with, Kristen and Lisa at the school lunch department have just turned that totally around. That, you know, having great people surrounding us is really helping us not have to put in the positions that we're stressing at the end of the year and, and taking a few things off our plate that we, we've had to stress about in the past. So it's, it's good. I agree.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, it's a good point.
I think, you know, you, you're being understandably humble. But certainly, the, the business administrator's role is to make sure that, to work with the other department heads that have some oversight over their revolving funds to make sure all those things are happening. So notwithstanding the understandable humility that you're bringing to this, you certainly deserve some kudos. This is not the type of things that we were seeing a handful of years ago. So really, greatly excellent work. And even the, the negative that you're showing, that's sort of, that's, that's, that's paper money. That's not real money.
On the, yeah, that's.
The circuit break.
Circuit break.
You've just encumbered the year, right?
Right. Exactly.
You've encumbered the full twelve months.
For, for tuitions, I believe.
Spent tuitions.
Patty Jackson and Lynn have fully.
Which is an appropriate thing to do, but that's not, that's money's not out the door yet.
Right. Exactly. Oh, it certainly wouldn't be going out until June, the last payment was probably going out in June. So we've got ten months ahead of us of.
Good. Good stuff. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Other questions on the business reports? And do we have a personnel report?
So I apologize. We are, we've restructured a little bit upstairs in the central office and probably a little miscommunication on my part. So I'll, I'll take a little bit of hit, hit on this one. But we're trying to get all the payroll loaded and that's taking our priority. And maybe I communicated that this personnel report didn't get communicated out properly. So I'll take that on.
And this was, this was going to be the new hires.
Yeah. And, and we are still onboarding people. And, you know, they're, they're, they're making sure that we have all the people in the place. And, and I, I did think that that was a little bit more critical. And not to say that it wasn't important to inform the school committee of who our new hires were. But I need to make sure that they were in payroll, they were set up. We have to run our first payroll next week for, for the school year. So that was, that was kind of four hundred and something full-time employees plus all the substitutes and, and part-time employees and everything. Just kind of took a little priority. So I apologize.
That's okay. So we'll have that in the next agenda.
I promise you.
Okay.
It will be in the next.
Go ahead. Chris?
Do you know of any unfilled positions?
There are possibly, there are a couple of long-term subpositions that haven't been filled. We have some pregnancies, some maternity leaves that are, that are facing us. And they're not for September one, but later in September. And I know that there's a couple of positions that might be a thirty to sixty to ninety day positions that are not yet filled. And those are typically a little harder to fill. And I've been approached by a couple of administrators saying, how can you help me fill these? You know, you've got me on a tight leash with the money and I'm, you know. So I just say, you gotta talk to Kim.
So we're, we're closing in on everything. There's a, you know, if there was a late resignation or, you know, then those, obviously, there's a little bit of a domino effect there. And we, you know, but we're, we're in really good trade.
I think many districts deal with that. And I see it on listserv a lot last year. I haven't seen it yet this year, where, where administrators are up in arms about districts stealing their employees on August thirty-first and not giving a two-week notice or a two-month notice or any notice or, you know, it's different. So that hasn't hit us yet. I think we're, you know, again, I think we're, we're retaining some really great employees. People aren't jumping ship. It's a good thing. And, and, you know, most of our positions are filled, but there are a couple that are, that are still hanging out there. I do have, I do have another update, though. Just going really quickly. And I, I don't mean to take up much time. We've, we've completed our bus routes for this year. We're, we're still in draft mode, but we've completed them. We've sent them off to the bus company. The drivers, if you, people may have noticed Wakefield buses on the streets the last couple of days. They're driving the routes to make sure everything times out, everything's accurate. We do intend to publish those routes to the families this week. But a couple of highlights. We went into the bus routes, who are bus planning this year with a couple of goals. And one was to remove the middle school, high school joint buses in the afternoon. And the other goal was to, there were three goals, actually. The second goal was to try and incorporate a late bus from the high school and middle school for those students who needed to, who chose to stay later to, to get additional supports. And also to assist our Metco students somehow in getting to the T station if they wanted to stay late for support. So I'm happy to report on the, on the combo buses. We're going to run two dedicated buses out of the high school in the afternoon and three dedicated buses out of the Galvin in the afternoon. There is a six bus. And just the sheer numbers, I, I do have to run one combo bus that's going to leave the high school, it'll go directly to the Galvin, and then proceed out to, I believe, the west side of town. It's just kind of along the way. So I set it up so that was, Galvin was along the way to pick up additional kids. And it wasn't, you know, the bus leaving here and then going out to Montrose or going down to Greenwood or something else. So that was, that's good news, not ideal, not as, not as good as we wanted it to be. But I think we made great strides in getting to, to, to most of our buses being segregated between high school and middle school kids, students. The late buses, we, we run six buses in town now, only five at the elementary. So we are going to run a late bus every day, Monday through Thursday, not Fridays, but Monday through Thursday. It'll leave the high school approximately three oh five, go directly to the Galvin. So this will be a segregated bus. I mean, I, I mean, an incorporated bus.
Integrated.
Integrated. Thank you. Pick up the Galvin students. And then from there, it's going to go to the Greenwood T Station to drop off the Metco students if they need transportation on the, on the T. Hit the Greenwood School, loop back around, hit the Walton School, hit the Doll Bear School, and it probably hits somewhere like Montrose and Lowell Street. So, so that we can hit that, that edge of town also. And then possibly come back to the Woodville. Just, I haven't figured that out yet because we are picking up the Galvin kids. We tried to hit every elementary school. We're the kind of neighborhood schools that were kind of a good stop. We didn't want to have twenty stops. We, we identified four or five stops for the late buses. It gets us one downtown when they hit the Galvin, T Station, Greenwood, Walton, Doll Bear, and then possibly back to the Woodville. So that's something that Mr. Coltoni and Mr. Metropolis were, were really pushing, pushing to get, because they, they felt like students weren't given the opportunity to stay late for help. So I think that's a, a great accomplishment that we, that we were able to.
That's great.
Just want to give you an update on the buses.
Thank you. Okay. Subcommittee reports, budget.
Budget, subcommittee is meeting this Friday at seven.
All right. Thank you. Labor relations.
We have, after a couple of weeks of a hiatus of sorts, although there was lots of work going on in the background with preparing language and such, we've now got our full schedule with a meeting today, tomorrow, actually two meetings, three sessions next week. So we are working toward the, the goal of being able to have a full public conversation on the, at the September thirteenth meeting.
Great.
My, I guess, request or recommendation would be that we schedule an executive session prior to that, either immediately prior or even potentially the day before, the twelfth or something, if, if possible, to allow for, you know, for thought conversations and Q and A before the, before the, the, the public conversation. So I'd leave that up to you or maybe guidance from the rest of the committee. But.
Great, great. Yeah.
It is our goal, we've been driving toward that vote on the thirteenth. So we're in a really good place to, to be there.
Okay. So if members want to email me and, and let me know what they'd prefer, I'll do a sort of informal poll whether you want to do something right beforehand on the thirteenth or the day before. And we can, we can work that into our schedule. Thank you. And, and finally, policy. We've got some motions.
Yes, we do. So policy actually also met right before this, just to discuss some language about the field trip policy. So that one will have an amendment, but I'll get, I'll get to that after we first do.
Okay.
Move that the school committee approve the subcommittees of the school committee policy two oh nine dash ES presented.
Second. The motion's been made. And second question.
That's the substance.
That is the subcommittees.
Subcommittees. Policy on subcommittees. This was the, growing out of the conversation around the policy, excuse me, subcommittee reorganization.
I just had a quick question. Should we have some language in there about, about the role of non-subcommittee members and their ability to speak or not speak during the subcommittees? Because I know that that's come up. Was that in there?
It's not. No, I didn't. I don't think that we have any of that in there now.
It's not in there.
I don't know whether it's, I don't know whether it's worth it or not. I just.
I think it's elsewhere. I think it is in, we have language in policies around open meeting.
Okay.
And some of the norms and procedures. I think it's in there.
Okay. That's fine. That's covered.
Yeah. Go ahead.
To follow up on, I'm not questioning that you at all. But it may be good, even if it is redundant, to also put it there. Because that's one place that, that question comes up a lot.
It does. It does.
The question really comes up a lot. And to say, well, it's not here, it's here. And then someone spends fifteen minutes looking for it. then someone's spending 15 minutes looking for it. It seems that, you know, whatever the reflection is in the prior policy, which I assume is consistent with open meeting law, my two cents would be that maybe we just add it. Not necessarily we know what it is tonight.
Right, right.
But, because that comes up a lot.
It does, yeah.
And there's a, you know, does a, what happens if there's four school committee members at a subcommittee meeting and, you know, what, does the dynamic change and all of that?
Sure.
We can't be too clear on that because it, it has happened.
Okay. Sure. Did you have a thought on that?
No, I was, you clarified, Mr. Morgan. That was my question. My original thinking was that would exclusively be governed by open meeting law, but I think to your point, to restate it again, it's not, you know, you can never say it's safe.
Sometimes redundancy is a good thing.
Sure.
So is it the sentiment of the committee that we, that we wait on this for a couple of weeks and add, add some language? I'm sure the language wouldn't be hard to.
There's an MGL section that.
That we can just pull from.
Reference.
Yeah, yeah. Does anyone have any objections to, to holding off a couple of weeks?
I don't necessarily have an objection, but I wonder if you, in terms of assigning subcommittees, would rather have this done so you can get started on that and then, I mean, that sounds like an easy enough addition to amend.
Okay. So, okay, so then we would approve that tonight and then amend it subsequently? I'm sorry, I was confused.
Well, I think we probably need to finalize the language and then we could just bring it back on.
Yeah. No, no, I'm totally, I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay.
And run such language by time council.
Right, right.
Yeah. Well, I would support Mr. Tyrrell's idea.
Okay. Okay. That's fine. So we draw the motion, is that?
So I think we can still vote on this motion tonight and then we'll just bring it up again.
Okay.
That way, you can assign committees.
Okay. All right. Fine. Any other thoughts on the motion? Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Move that the school committee approve the illegal substances and alcohol policy 1005 as presented.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Questions or comments on this one? Straightforward. Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimes? Thank you. And finally, field trips.
Okay. So I'm going to move to amend field trips policy 904-E currently on the table to include the following as the first sentence. Student field trips of significant educational value shall be encouraged and permitted under rules established by the superintendent that shall address but not be limited to such issues as safety of transportation and accommodations, cost, including expectations for fundraising by students, time away from school, appropriateness of the field trip for the grade level, and the trip approval process.
Second. Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Maybe before we open it up for questions, do you, Robbie, you want to talk about the additional language and where that came from?
So my thanks to Ms. Morgan for bringing this MGL before me. That bit that I had just read is a direct quote from MGL 71, section 37N about policies on school-sponsored student travel, and it just states that school committees must have a policy that speaks to those things. In discussing that with Dr. Smith, obviously, there was nothing in there that wasn't already being done. We just need to memorialize it in a policy and it's something that we've historically empowered the superintendent with them and her building principals with handling, so it's something we just inserted a bit of language in there to put in our policy.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Comments? Thanks, Kate, for flagging that. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimes? Okay. Thank you.
So now then, do we need a vote on the policy itself? That was just a vote on the amendment. To add that in, do we also need a vote then to adopt the policy as amended?
It was policy as amended. Yeah. Future dates and agenda items. I talked about the retreat. Tom mentioned the executive session and again, if you can give me your preference on that on the 13th and then we'll have the state legislative delegation back on the 27th. I guess that's it. Any, any thoughts or comments on future agenda items or dates? Okay. All right. School committee comments. Want to start over with RJ?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Chris?
Great time in the dunk tank. Italian festival. It was a great afternoon and we had a lot of activity. It was, it was good cause and the benefactor of that was the Scholarship Foundation.
All right. Good. And I tried, for the record, I tried to dunk Chris, but I failed miserably. Three tries.
Yeah, but that 14-year-old got me. He was a ringer.
Thanks. Tom?
Just a general, good, good wishes to all in the opening of school, both faculty and staff and students.
Here's to a great, successful opening for the first day of school for all the students. I see that high school orientation's tomorrow for the freshmen.
Freshmen, yeah.
I was thinking, they must be so nervous, but they'll all do great, so.
Well, there's a nervous parent in this room.
Oh, that's right. My daughter, when my daughter came, my daughter and her friend, when they went to high school, they came out, they wanted to go together even though they lived on opposite sides of town, so they went together and we picked them up together and they came out. I said, so how was it? They said, we're going to school with men. They have beards. There are people there with beards.
Welcome to high school.
Rob?
All right. Comments? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of August 23, 2016.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? The meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
I have some warrants if anybody's available.